I'd like to call the Monday, October 12th, 2020, Blue Springs Planning Committee Commission Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me in the pleasurable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a ruling and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone this evening and those watching from home. Tonight's agenda will consist of Item 1, Consent Agenda, which consists of the September 28th meeting minutes. Item 2, Conditional Use Permit for Van Duit. Item 3, Vacation for Edgewater at Chapman Farms. Item 4, General Development Plan for Blue Springs Logistics. Item 5, Rezoning for Blue Springs Logistics. Item 6, Preliminary Platte for Blue Springs Logistics. Item 4, 5, and 6 will be heard together. Item 7, Other Business, and Item 8, Adjournment. At this time, I entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Chair.
I have a motion from, or, sorry, Commissioner Peel. I'm jumping the gun.
That's fine. I move that the meeting minutes from September 28th, 2020, of the Planning Commission be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Peel and a second by Commissioner Karadoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, I'll read the instructions for the public hearing because we have several of those this evening. So, we'll open the public hearing. We'll call exhibits from the city attorney. We'll have the staff present on that application. If the applicant is present, they'll make a presentation. We'll then listen for witnesses in favor and then witnesses opposed. We'll have questions and general discussion and then we'll close the public hearing and have a motion. So, I'll open the first public hearing for Conditional Use Permit, CUP 09207491, Van Duit, and ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jack DeSumer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Application with Attachments. 3, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on September 26th, 2020. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference.
Thank you. I would ask the staff for their presentation.
Thank you, Chair Sandersen and council members. A public hearing is being held today at the request of the applicant, Brent Klein, with Klein Van and Specialty Rental, doing business as Van Duit, on behalf of the property owner, Gaming Partners International. The request is to approve a Conditional Use Permit, or a CUP, that allows the outdoor sales and service equipment use as an accessory use to the primary general, the primary use of general manufacturing on a property addressed at 2925 Northwest 7th Highway. And as you can see in this aerial photo, at the southwest corner of 7th Highway and Pink Hill Road. The property does span two properties currently. The property is also zoned light industrial, as it is similar to all the properties to the south and west of it. This, the two properties that it spans is Lot 15 of Mill Springs Business Park Subdivision and Lot 1 of Gaming Partners International Subdivision. It's roughly 6.5 acres. The property zone, or the zoning district which the property is in, does allow the general manufacturing use by right. This means that the sale of the manufactured product on this property would be allowed by right. However, the use proposed by Van Duit tonight does require outdoor storage of their vans, which is not allowed in the light industrial zoning district without 100% screening. On the other hand, also allowed in the light industrial zoning district is the outdoor sales and service of equipment use, which includes vehicle sales and rental, which does allow outdoor storage of vans and vehicles and equipment or similar, without 100% screening. Thus, staff does believe that it is fair of the code to allow the applicant to apply for the CUP to store the vehicles outdoors without 100% screening, as required for the manufacturing use, if they go through the same process as any other vehicle sales or rental business would be required to go through, which in this case is the CUP or the Conditional Use Process before you tonight. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed plan, and I'll go over what is being proposed here. The applicant, or Van Duit, their business is manufacturing business first and sales and rental of vehicles second, or accessory to that primary use. They, in essence, take finished vans and outfit the interior of them for everything from working or work-related uses to camping and everything in between. So, they, in essence, fit out the inside of the vans. They'll store these vehicles, the vans, pre and post manufacturing process outside of the building in locations marked here by the applicant. There are enough spaces for parking of the customers and employees. And there's also, to the west of the building, there's some off-street loading areas that have been constructed previously by the previous tenant, which is GPI, or Jamaica. So, the applicant is also looking at providing or expanding the parking lot to the south and possibly having more outdoor storage of vans directly to the south of the existing parking lots. They're also providing a wrought iron style fence in two phases. One, in prior occupancy, and two, whenever they expand the van storage area to the south, it'll, they'll provide the blue areas that you can see here in Phase 1, prior to occupancy of the building, and then the yellow areas will coincide with the parking lot expansion to the south. Staff does believe that this proposal does meet the 10 review criteria for the requested CUP and does recommend approval. In the interest of time, I'll briefly outline the main reasons why staff believes this proposed use is appropriate at this location. First, code requires any CUP to comply with the requirements of the Development Code. This proposal does meet the required parking, existing landscaping installed by the former GPI, does meet the current standards as well. There's enough lighting on site and screening, except the applicant has provided or proposed to install a wrought iron style fence along the north side of the existing building to screen, to better screen the existing AC HVAC units along Pink Hill to the north. And so, they will provide that in blue, you can see here, prior to occupancy. Additionally, the proposed use meets all the required special use standards for vehicle sales and rental use, except for the required 25-foot paving setback along 7th Highway. That paving currently is closer to 7th Highway than the required 25-foot setback. However, this is an existing parking lot for which GPI did obtain a variance to reduce the required setback, paving setback for the general manufacturing use, which is the same use as being proposed before you today. But as a condition to meet the intent of the special use standard, staff does recommend requiring the existing drive aisle to remain free and clear of any vehicles, unless they're driving through it, of course. And any vehicle storage areas must be partially screened, as the applicant has proposed, with a wrought iron style fence. This will, this will place all storage or parking areas at least 25 feet back from 7th Highway, which staff believes meets the intent of the code. Do note that any future paving expansions, expansions must meet the required 25-foot paving setback, and the applicant has shown a decent setback, which will have to be confirmed prior to the expansion of that southern parking lot. Second, code does require that the proposed use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area, since the proposed primary general manufacturing use is allowed by right on the LI Zone property that's being proposed here, as well as the LI Zone properties to the south and west. The general manufacturing use is compatible with the surrounding area. The accessory vehicle sales and rental use may or may not be compatible. However, this CUP only allows vehicle sales and rental as an accessory use to general manufacturing. Thus, if the general manufacturing use goes away, so must the vehicle sales and rental. Additionally, this CUP only allows the outdoor storage of vehicles, not of any other materials or products, like metal panels or anything used, wiring or anything used during the manufacturing process. So, thus, no other materials can be stored outdoors to help limit the visual impact of any off, or different types of materials that may not be as finished-looking. So, with the five conditions, staff believes that this CP will allow a manufacturing use that meets the intent of the code and is compatible with the surrounding area. And this five staff conditions, I'll go over the conditions here. One, the use is limited to these two properties, Lot 15 and Lot 1, as I mentioned previously, of GPI and the Mill Springs Business Park. Prior to expanding the parking lot to the south, they will have to combine the two lots so that they are just one use on one property. So, they can do that through an administrative plat. Additionally, I mentioned that exterior storage is allowed, but the conditions do limit that to vehicles and requires a fence to be in place prior to occupancy. The 25-foot paving setback is also allowed as one of the conditions, provided that it's, the drive aisle remains free and clear and any future parking lot expansions meet the code as well and keep that 25-foot setback. The, additionally, there is some bike parking that should be installed. And prior to completion of the southern parking lot expansion, the public sidewalk needs to be extended. Any required stormwater needs to be improved for Public Works. And same goes with the landscaping and wrought iron fence along the 7th Highway frontage of that proposed parking area. So, with those conditions, staff does recommend approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Any questions for Mr. Jury on this?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Jury, could you explain the color palette shown on the site plan? Does that, does that material that goes around the parapet of the building, or what exactly are those?
I believe the applicant can better explain that, but I believe those are to the interior, existing pallet racks on the inside of the building.
Understood. No further questions. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jury. I would ask the applicant to come forward if they'd like to make a presentation. Just a reminder, you'll need to be sworn in, and please state your name and address for the record.
I do. Brent Klein, Chulakathy, Missouri. Okay, so I just, I made a few notes while I was back there. First of all, I want to say that Nathan Jury over here, you got a heck of a guy. This is my second project, working with Nathan, and he is just a wonderful resource for the city of Blue Springs. Also, I dealt with Karen Fandora and Mike Malin, both in some situations where I needed some extra attention, and both people are just incredible to work with. And so, I wanted to give some kudos to them because they all work really hard and never have I felt that they, in any way, I mean, they're just as cooperative as could be. So, we haven't closed on the property yet, and of course, this is one of the big, this Conditional Use Permit is one of the big hurdles. We do have a few hurdles to get over, and we're very hopeful that we'll do that. Fortunately, COVID has not been one of those hurdles. The RV industry landed on the right side of this, and though I do feel horrible for businesses that did not, we just happened to come out on the right side of what we're all dealing with, and it's part of our decision-making process in growing in Blue Springs. We are now up to a 14-month waiting line for RVs. So, as you know, traveling habits have changed, and that has helped our business. Since coming to Blue Springs, our team has grown from, when we really, when we very first started looking here, we were at five or six people in production, and now we're at 20 people. We do anticipate with this expansion, bringing the team up to about 40 people. And for the record, my primary concern with the facility or with being here in Blue Springs, it isn't any of the things that we talked about, the required screening, the setback issue on the north side of the facility, my additional parking needs, any of the work that we have to do to make the facility work for us. My biggest concern actually is, is the property tax issue, which I do intend on working on because I do want to, I do want to be here. And I know that that's not for this group, but, but it is for the record that it is one of the hurdles that I would like to get over. We hope and plan to grow, and we hope and plan to grow and remain in Blue Springs, as we do believe that Blue Springs is a good partner. We love the community. We believe we've been a good partner to the community, and we have grown. We are looking forward to continued growth. We've grown very comfortable with the city and the people here, and we do employ, a lot of the people we employ are from, are from right here in Blue Springs and certainly Jackson County. And so, we hope to continue to be a good contributing business partner to the area and, and looking forward to working with Blue Springs for many years to come. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Klein?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Klein, would you elaborate on the color palettes, please?
Nathan asked that I would just generally kind of show on the plan how we store our products, and that's, we generally like to keep it on the outer walls, so that is interior pallet racks that we would store things like aluminum and wiring and things like that on.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein? Yes, Commissioner Billups.
Mr. Klein, on your comment, you just mentioned that you were talking about fencing, and you're all right with the wrought iron fencing. You mentioned three different kinds.
I am, I am very good with the fencing. In fact, I like the fencing that you have out here because it's nice and tall and it's got sharp things at the top, and I would intend ultimately to use the fencing as, you know, protection for, you know, to keep people from taking products and et cetera. But that would be a Phase 2 sort of a scenario. We do need to screen on the north side of the building, and we need to screen in front of where our vans will be, and perfectly fine with that. Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none? Is there any, anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of this project? Okay. Any other discussion from the commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I'd like to ask staff whether, out of the notification letters, and also, were there any letters of opposition and in favor that were submitted, or that, any of the 185-foot return?
We had one 185-foot letter, Blue Equity Consulting. It was returned to us. We received no letters of approval or opposition.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Do you have any question? Commissioner Billups.
I just, I just want to, on the record, say I'm glad you are choosing to stay in Blue Springs, and we're glad to have you here and hope you stay for a very long time.
Any other discussion?
On the record, I'd like to concur with Commissioner, and I'm glad that he's considering, as he expands his workforce to hire, consider citizens from Blue Springs.
Any other final comments? All right. I will close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the Conditional Use Permit.
Chair.
Commissioner Billups.
I'll yield the billups.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the Conditional Use Permit, CUP 09207491, for Van Duit, with the five staff conditions.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Billups, the second by Commissioner Karadoff. This will be a roll call vote.
Clayton, Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Billups?
Aye.
Peel?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Stockenberry?
Aye.
Roar?
Aye.
Karadoff?
Aye.
And Chair Sandersen.
Aye. So, the motion carried with these five staff conditions. This item will be recommended and heard by the city council on their Monday, October 19th meeting at 6:00 p.m. All right. So, moving along, I'm going to open the public hearing for Vacation, VAC 09207493, Edgewater at Chapman Farms. And I'll ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jack DeSumer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Application with Attachments. 3, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on September 26th, 2020. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference.
Thank you. I would ask for the staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chair Sandersen and commissioners. Before you this evening, as a request by Clayton Properties Group or Summit Homes to vacate an approximately 3,300 square foot area of right-of-way and utility easement, which is located in the median of southwest Green Meadow Drive between 7th Highway and southwest 8th Street. The area to be vacated is a current landscape island in which the applicant would like to maintain privately for monument signage and landscaping. There are no utilities currently nor planned within that landscape island, and the city has received consent from all utility companies to vacate the utility easement. The requested vacation does not impact any other property owners, other than the applicant who owns the existing landscape islands to the west, which are already tracts and are privately maintained. So, it's, the applicant is just requesting to continue that through 2-7 Highway for this property. Staff recommends approval of the vacation with two conditions, and I will stand for any questions they may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Any questions for the staff? All right. Seeing none, I would ask the applicant to come forward and speak. Are you, are you sworn in? Please state your name and address for the record.
I do. John Urplading Olson, 130113th, North Kansas City, Missouri, 64116.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. You know, Matt did a good job of explaining our request here, and really just here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions for the staff? Seeing none. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition? Any further discussion with commissioners? All right. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that, oh, go ahead, Peel. I'll yield to you. Chair, Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks.
I'd like, I'd like a motion to approve the Vacation of Edgewater at Chapman Farms, VAC 09-20-7493, with the two staff conditions.
A motion from Commissioner Banks. Shall I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Honeycutt? This will be a roll call vote.
Clayton, Commissioner Karadoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Billups?
Aye.
Peel?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Stockenberry?
Aye.
Roar?
Aye.
Hose?
Aye.
Chair Sandersen.
Aye.
So, that motion carried with the two staff conditions. This item will be recommended and heard by the city council on their Monday, October 19th meeting at 6:00 p.m. All right. The next item will be, I will reopen the public hearing for the General Development Plan, GDP 09207464, and rezoning, RZ 09207465, for Blue Springs Logistics. And I would ask for exhibits from our city attorney.
Mr. Chairman, in GDP 09207464, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. Exhibit 2, Application with Attachments. Exhibit 3, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on September 12th, 2020. Exhibit 4, 185-foot Notification Map. Exhibit 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. Exhibit 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. Exhibit 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. Exhibit 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference. Exhibit 9, Letter Dated 9/14/2020, from Charles E. Weedman Jr., Crouch, Spangler, and Douglas. Exhibit 10, Letter Dated 10/6/2020, from John and Linda Hall, residents. And I'm adding Exhibit 11, which is not on the printed agenda, which is a PowerPoint from the applicant.
All right.
For RZ 09207465, I offer the following exhibits into the record. 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Application with Attachments. 3, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on September 12th, 2020. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference. 9, Letter Dated 9/14/2020, from Charles E. Weedman Jr., Crouch, Spangler, and Douglas. 10, Letter Dated 10/6/2020, from John and Linda Hall, residents. And I'm adding Exhibit 11, the PowerPoint presented by the applicant.
Thank you. I would now ask for the staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chair Sandersen and commissioners. Before you this evening, a request for a rezoning, General Development Plan and Preliminary plat for the Blue Springs Logistics Center, which is a light industrial development on 39.92 acres, north of northeast Shefferson Street and west of Tire Road. The first request is for a rezoning of the subject property from LI ADPO, which is Light Industrial in the Adams Ferry Parkway Overlay, to LI Light Industrial. The request does not change the land use is permitted on the site, but it does remove the restrictions within the Adams Ferry Parkway Overlay that are more restrictive, including the minimum open space requirement and the maximum floor area ratio, neither which the site as proposed would meet. The General Development Plan is the second request before you, which does provide a conceptual plan of the site. Access to the site is provided from a new proposed street, northeast 27th Street, in which there would be two access points on the east side of that street that would loop the building. The site does include an approximately 585,600 square foot, single-story industrial building that can accommodate multiple tenants. Dock bays and trailer parking are provided on the north, or, sorry, the south, the east and west building walls, and then parking along the north and south building walls. As noted in the staff report, the building and the site is classified as a general industrial building, of which the site meets all the requirements, with one exception to the building height. The building height does exceed the maximum height by four feet due to the parapet wall. Staff does believe that this modification is warranted, as it does provide additional architectural detail and design to the building. The exterior building materials are predominantly tilt-up concrete with various colors and patterns to create visual interest on all four sides. Each corner of the building, which is pictured here in the upper right-hand corner, does include, has more of a two-story appearance with storefront windows, and that, those would be the the main entrances for the tenant spaces on all four corners. Parking and landscaping will be reviewed in greater detail as part of the site plan design review process. And, a conceptual site plan does meet all the pedestrian access requirements. However, there are a few building projections, which, in the, on the scale does not show up. But there are a few building projections on the north and south sides that do encroach by two feet into the eight-foot sidewalk. However, staff believes that that is a minor deviation, and still meets the intent of the code by providing pedestrian access throughout the site. The third request is for a preliminary plat for the site, which is proposed to be a one-lot subdivision, and then eighty-foot wide right-of-way proposed to be dedicated on the west property line. That would accommodate the new northeast twenty-seventh street. Five-foot sidewalks would be required on both sides of that street connecting to Jefferson. The applicant would be, the developer of lot one would be required for installing the sidewalk on the east side of the street, and then whenever the property to the west develops, they would be responsible for developing the west sidewalk. The required, required, street and sidewalk improvements are required to be completed prior to occupancy of the new building, and that also includes site improvements, and street improvements to Jefferson as well to accommodate this development. Staff did Staff did review the rezoning request. Sorry, this is not. Alright, staff did review the rezoning request under the review criteria and does find that the rezoning request to remove the ADPO and maintain the light industrial-based zoning district is in keeping with the designation and the comprehensive plan of the property as industrial. The zoning district is appropriate in areas that are easily accessible and have visibility to major transportation corridors such as I-70. This rezoning also meets other goals within the comprehensive plan, including growing and diversifying businesses to increase employment opportunities in the city. Staff also believes the request to rezone out of ADPO is warranted, as it is further from Adams Ferry Parkway than other light industrial zonings that have also not been included in the Adams Ferry Parkway overlay, including the Kohl's Distribution Center, as well as Forcia. Generally, the Adams Ferry Parkway overlay is intended to accommodate residential and commercial districts, but not industrial districts, which generally require less open space and limited active open space, both of which limit the potential development and expansion of large-scale industrial developments. The general development plan was also reviewed under the review criteria, and staff does find that the request is in compliance with the request. There are two minor modifications, as I mentioned, including the building height and the minor building projection of the sidewalk. Infrastructure improvements are required to be made to accommodate this new development, and the proposed development does provide additional industrial investment into the city, creating employment opportunities. The proposed preliminary plat meets the review criteria, and staff does recommend approval of the rezoning, approval of the general development plan with one condition, and approval of the preliminary plat with four conditions, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Billups?
Yeah, I have a question about the construction of the new road on Twenty-seventh Street. I guess it's the name, going to be the name of it. That, part of that road is not on the property. It's in, I guess, a land that is still part of Jackson County. Is there a right-of-way required? Do we have that in place?
Yes, they, and I'll let the applicant.
And it looks like it leaves a little bit of an orphaned little sliver over there, too, because it's not a straight line down the property line. Is that, is there a reason for that?
Um, yes, because the road, the road will curve with that. Sorry, but it's not. Alright, yeah, so that, the right-of-way dedication is just following the curve of that street, so the additional right-of-way will be on the southwest side of that. Is that what you were?
Well, so does that have to come, go through the county, or what, what has to, anything has to be done there? Or just, just the property owner to get that right-of-way dedicated, or?
Yes, and I'll let the applicant answer on how they're working on that.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Peal.
Mr. Wright, is, since that building encroached two-foot onto the eight-foot sidewalk, is that still within ADA complacency for wheelchair access?
Yes, it would be.
Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Alright, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? You'll need to be sworn in, and then state your name and address for the record, please.
I do. My name is Rich Wood. I'm an attorney with the Pulsinelli Law Firm. Our address is nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Kansas City, Missouri. I have with me a couple folks related to this development. We have Chris Hafner from Davidson Architecture and Engineering, and then I also have Devin Schuster from Flint Development, which is the principal of Bruce, Blue Springs Seventy Logistics LLC. We don't have a presentation tonight, but we just want to say, we are in agreement with the staff report. We're in agreement with the staff recommendations, and then each of the conditions of approval that staff is recommending be imposed on the, on the approvals. We are asking that you approve each of the three applications along with, in accordance with the staff recommendations. And we can answer any questions you might have. I can respond to Commissioner Billups' questions early if you would like me to.
Yep.
So, the, the area of Twenty-seventh Street that goes to the west onto the adjoining property, we have asked the city to, if necessary, use its condemnation powers to, to obtain that right-of-way. City does have power to condemn outside its boundaries if it is related to the city's road network. So, that's how we're going to achieve that. The reason for the remnant parcel that you noted was to achieve the line of sight distances down where it meets Jefferson Street. And I can have Mr. Hafner elaborate on that a little bit, but that's the reason why it has to jog out and leave that remnant.
Okay.
Happy to answer any other questions also.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wood, or the other applicants? Yes, Commissioner Billups?
Yeah, thank you for those answers, by the way. According to staff report, this building is being built on a speculative basis, and it is a very large building. I think probably, you know, at least as large as anything else we've got around in Blue Springs. Can you give us any kind of reassurance that we're not building what's going to end up being a very, very large, empty building?
I'm gonna let Mr.
I don't want you to name names or anything like that, but, you know, it, can you give us some assurance that at least part of it is already booked, or, you know, going to have some tenants?
So I'm gonna let Mr. Schuster elaborate on that, but I think what, what he's going to say is that the, the market is, is extremely hot right now for tenants looking for these type facilities. And they also want to be able to move into these facilities quickly, and not wait twelve to fifteen months for something like this to be built.
And I'll have to ask you to be sworn in and name and address as well.
I do. Devin Schuster, six-four-four-five Overbrook Road, Prairie Village, Kansas. Yeah, Rich really hit that on the nail on the head. The way that this industry has moved, you know, it was hot before COVID, and COVID really has, has pushed it forward. These tenants want space like this. They need it to be available. They don't have time to be able to plan and go through the process. They need space tomorrow. So the market is great. We don't have a tenant in tow at this point. I can give you an example. We have a project very similar up in Liberty that will wrap up in December. We just signed our first lease about a month ago, and they need to occupy in December. And that's a three hundred thousand square foot tenant. So, gives you an idea of the velocity of the market, and you have to have space available in the configuration that these users want to, want to see it, to be successful. So it really is a speculative market.
Like I said, I just, I just don't want to stand up with an empty, a large, empty building.
Yeah, and we don't want that either. We, we are tracking a lot of the, you know, a lot of this data that's out there. We're tracking a lot of tenants. You know, we obviously don't have our approvals yet, so we're not out on the market, marketing this property yet. But once we do, we're, we're geared up to hit the, hit the market hard. We be, we believe we'll be very successful, you know. There are a number of tenants that are circling the market that we want to get this in front of, so.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I do. Good evening. Chris Hafner with Davidson Architecture and Engineering, four-three-zero-one Indian Creek Parkway, Overland Park, Kansas, six-six-two-oh-seven. Good evening. Thanks for listening to our presentation and hearing that great staff report. Just to expand a little bit, we worked with our traffic study engineer, priority engineers, worked closely with Chris Sandy on site distances and making sure Twenty-seventh Street was safe from an entrance and exit movement standpoint all along Jefferson. The high point of that drive is really about the midpoint of our site, and worked very closely with staff what distance we needed to be away from that high point of Jefferson to make sure from a speed of travel standpoint that we were safely providing that access point. So, to your point, I've had that road about six or seven different places, and this is where we landed that took the least amount of ground from our adjacent neighbor to the west to be able to be safe and have access on Jefferson. Also, just, just to point out, we did get the letter from the adjacent neighbors last Thursday. My staff jumped on that. We appreciate Karen sending that out. Some of the points that came up in that are really buffering and screening. I had a chance today to look at the site lighting. While we are using LED fixtures that are flat lensed, they meet all of the city's requirements from a photometric standpoint at the property lines where there wouldn't be any light pollution. And spillage over, additionally, what we're looking at is some additional, basically, louvered screens that would fit underneath the light, so you wouldn't actually see the light source. So, it's one thing to not have light spill. It's another to look up and see the flat lens light source. So, that is one of the accommodations that we're going to be working on. We are in for, a little presumptively, for final site plan. Those submissions, resubmissions are due back this Thursday. We're going to make sure that's part of it. Additionally, talked to our landscape architect, who's, as Matt mentioned, refining those plans from a final site plan level. And we've asked them to focus a lot of evergreens, a lot of screening in the northeast corner of our property, to make sure our adjacent neighbors have as much screening and buffering as we can. We're also looking at berms in that area, looking at three-to-one slopes, and trying to get as big of a berm as we can along that northeast edge of the property as well. So, appreciate their commentary. And just wanted to let everybody know we're working hard on that, and that will be part of our resubmission of the final site plan this Thursday, which, with approvals here tonight and next Monday, would be on October twenty-sixth, planning commission meeting. Happy to answer any other questions about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Hafner. Any other questions for Mr. Hafner and the other applicants? Commissioner Honeycutt?
Approximately, how many different tenants could this facility hold?
It's a great question. Ideally, in a perfect world, it has one tenant that has, you know, a great base and great employment. We set the building up with four corners, though. So, each of these four corners has that same office feature, where we break down the, kind of the mass of the building, create a clear sense of entry at all of those points. So, in the least perfect world, but still a great world, we have four tenants that take that building, where we spine it down the middle and spine it kind of longitudinally as well. But, as we found in our other projects, as Devin mentioned, that's about a seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand square foot building. We're seeing these tenants really like that cross-dock ability for inflow and outflow of products. So, again, anywhere from one to four is the assumption here.
So you, you say you have a similar building in Liberty?
Correct.
Okay, so you said there's, you guys are ready to be open in December?
That's correct.
And you only have one tenant?
We're very excited about that.
Are they, are they going to take up the whole building, or they just taking up a portion of?
No, very similar process. We built it speculatively, moved forward with it, and once we got approvals, Devin and our brokerage team worked really hard to get the marketing going. So, we do have one lease signed before the building's done, which is fantastic. And they're taking about half the building. We've still got another half, but we're out to probably three or four different RFPs that are all very interested. And again, it comes down to having that speed to market, to be able to answer to these RFPs. It's also about location. That location was great for that particular product type, and we really feel like this location here has been underserved from a Jackson County and Blue Springs standpoint, with the ability to answer to these RFPs for this great workforce, be able to come forward and have a product ready to go to fill this building. We really, we wouldn't be building this if we didn't think it was a great project and a great opportunity for all of us.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Karadoff?
Is the example of the property you're talking about in Liberty, is that the facility on Sixty-Nine Highway?
It is. South Liberty Parkway and Sixty-Nine Highway, correct.
I see. And what's the time element that you propose for this project?
I'm sorry.
In terms of when you get started?
Construction schedule here? Actually, again, we've been very presumptive and hopeful. We're actually already working on permit-level documents for this, and would have those coming forward very soon after a final site plan on October twenty-sixth. Sometime in November, we'd be submitting that. We'd be looking for land disturbance and start moving dirt before the end of the year potentially, and having this facility open essentially, Devin, correct me if I'm wrong, this time next year. Ready to occupy.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? We do have one speaker forum from, assuming this is maybe Mr., Mr. Hall? Alright, you'll need to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record.
I do. My name is John Hall, and I live at forty-six-oh-nine Tire Road, and I'm glad you gave your presentation just before me. I appreciate it. But I made this up, so you're going to hear it anyway, okay? Good evening, planning commission members, staff members, and guests, okay? First, I'd like to thank the commission members for serving and fully appreciate the time that you spend up here doing this, especially after seeing the process tonight. I was fortunate enough to serve on the Great Valley School Board for three different terms, and recognize that you put a lot of time in beyond the meetings that occur here, in preparation, before and after. So thank you for that. My wife and I, Linda, we do live at forty-six-oh-nine Tire Road. Our family has been on that property since nineteen fifty-one. And talking through a mask is a pain. Also tonight with us is all those families, all those members that signed the letter that's in your packet tonight, and that was referred to. Tim and Jane Hearn, they live on the very, what, in your photo, or your, your presentation is the upper right corner. Dennis and Sarah McKee are here, and they actually have the majority of the property that's along the north border of this property. And they are currently building a brand-new home. Will be breaking ground on it within the next few days to raise their family, their small children there. Robert Mead is with us tonight. Robert just built a new home in twenty-eighteen, and he and his wife and their young child live directly north of the property. And then Lynn and I live directly northeast of the property on what's left of our farm, okay? You also may not be aware that currently there is ground being broken to build 10 to 12 new homes on the northeast corner of this property, directly behind what's the Green Valley Water Tower and the Tri-County Water Tower, water storage facility. The properties that I refer to, they're not just our residences, they're our homes. They're our homes seven days a week, 24 hours a day. We go there for rest. We go there for silence, just like you do, to catch up on things. And with COVID around, it's even more than it was before in a home. But now, it's become a virtual classroom for grandchildren and children. It's become an office for us to work out of our home. But through our efforts, I think we've developed a pretty good quality of life in that area. When we received the letter from the commission notifying us of the proposed project, we were, as you can imagine, concerned with the magnitude of this project. It's big, okay? We've lived with Coles and now Ferencia, and so we have a little bit of experience of being a neighbor with a project of this size. And Coles has separated even greater distance, and so there's a little bit of difference between the Coles project and this project. I was hesitant whether to stand up for this project or against this project, because having served on the school board, I know the impact that a project like this can have on a school district long-term, and I know that's going to be favorable. I know it's also an opportunity for employment in the area. That's favorable. But I know the city also knows of the things that comes with it that you have to deal with when you bring more in. We fully understand and respect the right of the property owners to develop the property. We are here as neighbors to ask our new neighbor to ensure measures are in place to not degrade our quality of life. We worked hard to get, basically, word wrapped. The letter that we sent to the commission had really two concerns in it. One was transient noise, and the other was transient light. And it was very good comments came forward on addressing transient light, okay? Hopefully, we can remove that from our concern list, okay? I want you to envision, you're at your home, and you hear the trash truck a block over. Now, I want you to envision you're at your home, and you hear 130 or 140 trash trucks a block over all day, all night. The facility, as it's designed and set up, lends itself beautiful 24 hours a day, seven days a week operation. Even though we don't know who the tenant is yet, you would suspect that that's what we would have at some point in time for some tenant. So, that means we have noise not only during the day, but you have it during the night. And when a truck comes in to the facility, a truck has to leave. So, there's two opportunities that occur every time a delivery is made. Every time a car comes in, a motorcycle comes in, a truck comes in. We are very concerned about the north boundary. That's where we live. That's where we reside. That's where we put in our sweat equity over the years. The design as it currently exists has a very narrow border between the truck access roads and the property, our backyards. It was good to hear that the architectural firm, the design firm, is looking at, including berms and other potential barriers in the area, and we view that as very favorable. We do know from our history of being there, from living the experience, that the Coles berm, the earthen berm, that was installed at the time of that building's erection has been very successful in mitigating sound being transient from that property to ours. And Coles is a 24-hour-day, seven-day-a-week property with truck traffic backed up continually. So, it can be successfully done. We would ask that it be strongly reviewed, and we would ask that it be implemented in some form or another. There may be better methods, and we certainly would be willing to compromise on that place. We just would like to have some peace. I'm not even going to speak on the transient light issue. That sounds like it's on its way to get mitigated. I do have one other issue that I would like to discuss briefly with the commission tonight, and it is on the stormwater runoff and the stormwater plan that will come into this, and it probably falls into your backyard. We've taken a field that's all permeable, big, as my granddaughter would say, "That's a professor word you're using there," permeable soil that absorbs rainwater when it hits it. And, believe it or not, there is an old retention pond in the northeast corner of that property. That property at one time was Stevenson's Orchards. I don't know whether you remembered or not. But Stevenson's, some of you probably weren't even around when Stevenson's had apples there. But, that's where they filled up their sprares. They had their pond there to, so they could take care of their trees. The old pond's still there, and what it does, it acts as a retention basin for that rainwater off of that field, once the soil does become saturated and we start getting runoff. It helps mitigate that water flow that travels underneath Tire Road across a very small corner of the property to the east, and then onto our property. The next thing that's in line with that is a water structure in our front yard, which serves as our driveway and a pond for cattle. I would ask the engineering study not only look at what is happening with rainwater runoff on site, but what does it do to structures and impoundments downstream? We do not want a situation where we overwhelm a structure someplace downstream with water that was being collected on a permeable surface to now have one that has 1.1 million square feet of impermeable surface that will immediately shed water. Now, I recognize in the site plan that most of that water drains to the west and goes into a large catch basin there. But we'd also like to make sure that, I think it's 5.3 acres, in the northeast corner is accounted for, and where will that water go and what will the volume be? I'm sure that can be included in the engineering plan for wastewater management, and we would ask that it certainly be included. What we're asking the council to unite, the commission, excuse me, is to not hold up the rezoning. We are not opposed to the rezoning. We recognize the individual that owns it, the group that wants to develop certainly have a right to do that, and there are benefits to do that. There is detriment to us as neighbors. It does not add value to our property, because the primary use of our property is our homes. It would be very difficult to say you added value to your home when you have a building of this size, of this nature, in your backyard. But I would ask each of you, as commissioners and even legal counsel and design team and operators, that if you're going to have this facility literally in your backyard, would it not be reasonable to ask the commission to include one of the items in their consent before it goes to the city council to ensure that there is mitigation in that proposal package for sound and sound transmission and noise, okay? If that can be accomplished, we don't stand opposed to the project. We're not going to stand jumping up and down in favor of it, because it's still our backyard. But I think our opposition would basically be taken away, and we could be good neighbors for a long time. So, is there any questions anyone has that I can answer? Is there anything that needs to be added?
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Hall. Any questions from the commission for Mr. Hall? Commissioner Peel?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall. The applicant might come forward and, oh, I'm sorry. I missed you. Sorry. Oh, did you have something, Commissioner Phillips?
I was just going to check with staff. The sound, the light, and the water mitigation, that all is handled at the time of site plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, then we'll have another opportunity to look at that in potentially two weeks to make sure that that has all been addressed?
Yes, the Planning Commission will, the residents, it won't be a
It won't be a public hearing, but we'll have a chance to look at it.
But the Planning Commission will have the opportunity to revisit that.
And we can keep that in mind when we do look at it at that point, because that's the place where it can be addressed, not here.
Yes. So, Mr. Hall, you did come back up here to state anything?
I certainly recognize it's not required by law, but would we, the families that are most affected, have any opportunity to review what is planned to be done on that facility? I see a, yes, okay. That would be a great help for us. Thank you. We want to work, we want to be a good neighbor, okay? Thank you.
The applicant would like to present or talk about any, answer any questions?
Of course, yeah. To answer that one, what we'll do, again, final plan level documents were submitted. We're updating them now, and again, got that letter Thursday. We're taking those into account. So, my suggestion would be when we get that all back to Matt and staff on Thursday, at that point, they could send that to that same group and make sure they have that information. To put some information, so everyone knows, we completely agree about the stormwater detention, just to hit that one first and foremost. My firm that I own has a civil engineering arm as well to this, and we work very closely with staff throughout this process on how we're looking at the stormwater drainage on this site. Blue Springs has requirements that we are absolutely meeting, which basically says, this is a greenfield site. As stormwater comes off with, admittedly, more impervious than theirs right now, right? We have to do two things. We have to do one, which is BMPs. We have to clean that water as it comes off of roof surfaces, as it comes off of parking lots, before it goes into a drainage swell and moves off of our site. So, that's one. So, we've got an entire report available and a part of the final plan package that basically shows how we meet what's called a level of service, to bring it back to greenfield site conditions. The second part of that, completely agree, stormwater detention. How are we holding our water as it moves off of these impervious surfaces and then eventually exits our site? People way smarter than me as the architect. The engineers are working very hard on that and have done that with infiltration basins, detention basins that happen on both sides of the building, and have proven up how that water velocity and the rate at which it goes out of our site has all been calculated and determined. So, at the end of the day, how this site is engineered is, as water leaves this site right now, is how water will leave the site when the building is in. And that's why we have 33% of the site as green space to accommodate infiltration basins, detention basins, things that are happening around the site to make sure that works. And that's all going to be part of that report and part of the final plan that your engineering staff has reviewed and will continue to work with us to make sure we meet all those requirements. As far as noise mitigation, I think what we've mentioned, and I think it's going to come down to landscaping. Blue Springs has a robust landscape ordinance, and what I think we've done on other projects, White Oak kind of comes to mind, where we did the new price chopper and the Novel Place Senior Living Facility. We did a, we got the landscape calculations and then put them in the locations most needed. Maybe not in the back of the shopping center, but up toward the street and things like that. My suggestion here would be to do the same thing with meeting the landscape requirements, but focusing a lot of that in that northeast corner. And I think if we could get, off the top of my head, a double row of, you know, evergreens, maybe a triple row in some areas where we can make it fit that stays year-round, that would really help light, noise, and the such. Because I don't feel like you're going to get a berm tall enough, and I understand their concern, and we want to be good neighbors. So, I think the landscaping from an evergreen standpoint is going to be the right answer for that corner, and it would be updated on the Thursday set that we get back in for final plan to share.
Any other final questions for the applicant? Commissioner Crandall?
I wanted to say I appreciate you considering the guy's information that he passed on about the noise mitigation, also the hours of operation, I think, probably be a valid point to think about, too, considering the residents in the area. So, I'm appreciative of you considering all of those factors.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Just to verify, there's no other, anyone in the audience that want to speak in opposition? Any other discussion from the commissioners? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the general development plan.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel?
I move the general development plan GDP 09 to 07464 for Blue Springs Logistics with its one condition to be approved and submitted by staff.
Got a motion by Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second? I think you heard what Commissioner Hose. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Stokemberry?
Aye.
Roar?
Aye.
Hose?
Aye.
Crandall?
Aye.
Honeycutt?
Aye.
Banks? Sanderson?
Aye.
So, that motion carried with the one staff condition. This item will be recommended and heard by the city council on their Monday, October 19th, meeting at 6:00 PM. I would now ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel?
I also move that rezoning, RZ 09 to 07465 for Blue Springs Logistics, be approved and submitted by staff.
A motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stokemberry? This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Stokemberry?
Aye.
Roar?
Aye.
Hose?
Aye.
Crandall?
Aye.
Honeycutt?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Peel?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye. So, that motion was carried. This item will be also heard. We recommended and heard by the city council at their Monday, October 19th, meeting at 6:00 PM. And finally, I'll ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel?
I move that preliminary plat PP 09207466 for Blue Springs Logistics with the four conditions be approved and submitted by staff.
Thank you. Have a motion by Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Roar? Oh, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any notes? That motion also carried with the four staff conditions. All right. That brings us to item seven, other business. Mr. Mallon?
I just wanted to let you know you have heard from the applicant here that we will be having a meeting on the October 26th, Monday night. We do have a couple of different items to bring forward that evening, so we will. Microphone not on. Well, yeah, there it is. Okay, so we will have a meeting on the 26th, as indicated previously by the applicant for the logistics center. We do have a couple other items on that agenda as well, so we will be meeting on the 26th. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, either now or if you want to shoot me an email or anything about what's going on in the planning world. Just to give you a couple of quick updates, our building permit numbers for the month of September were very, very high in terms of single-family homes and duplexes. We're starting to see a lot of subdivision plats that have been approved by this planning commission and by the city council and projects get recorded, and so the residential home market is And so, the residential home market is, and building market is still going very strong, and we're seeing that every day. And so, development activity, as you are aware, is, and the projects that are coming before you is still very strong, and staff is working hard to get them through the process and bring them before you. So, if at any point you have questions about what's going on throughout the city, please feel free to reach out to us. Or if you have any other questions about what's going on, please, we're here to help you.
Any other business from anyone on the commission? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Commissioner Peel, and a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Honeycutt? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.